Okay.
All right. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the agenda item by board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum may affect at all times. The chair may interrupt or terminate an individual statement where appropriate, including when statements are out of order to may be breach personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or other rights of property. And the public realizes this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. I'd also like to remind everyone in attendance that to avoid violations of individual rights of privacy, member of the public wishing to address the board during public comment will not be allowed to make comments about any student, staff member, or member of the general public. In addition, the board will not hear comments on contested cases or proceedings. With that, we'll go to the question. Entertaining motion for that.
I just have a quick change that needs to be made on the June 2 meeting agenda. It says that chair and A to C called the meeting to order. That was you.
Right, right, okay.
Cecilia, did you hear that?
That, that's under the approval of the.
She was talking before.
Yeah, there was another time when I was at the May 9 meeting, but my name wasn't listed. So we should maybe change that to.
So, sorry, so May 9 and June 2, I need to change?
Yeah, June 2, I led the meeting and not Stephanie.
Okay.
And I, I was, if it was okay, if this did all the motions I made and whatever, but it was listed as a member that was present.
Oh, okay, I will fix that too.
My everything, but, all right.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the day and we will hold on approving the minutes from previous. Second.
Exactly discretion. All in favor?
Aye.
So you will know that when she gets back.
So in regards to the bills, I think would really helpful, at least for me. You know, we can still see them in this form, but it'd be nice if we saw them kind of compared to kind of the budget for the, the school year, just to kind of compare all these costs relative to budget if we're actually approving them in that sense. That could be something that we work on next year for the new budget. But otherwise, it's kind of hard to, for me to determine if who the service expense of 1679 was appropriate on a certain day.
Okay. I guess that's something we'll talk to Cecilia about.
Maybe even comparing it to last year, that's what there was like a comparison.
Yeah. And where we are with the budget.
Yeah.
That infinite campus, I'm sure this renews once a year annually.
I had already said.
On that infinite campus, it just probably renews annually.
Are all the, the BMO financial, I assume that's all credit card charges.
Correct.
Paid off monthly or those are.
Yep.
I assume they're.
So once, um, once these are approved, then I go in tomorrow and send the payment to BMO. And that's done through the county treasurer. I send the ACH to them and then they ACH it to BMO. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can very well.
Okay, okay, I just feel like I'm echoing, so I'm just making sure.
And what's the difference with the stuff like highlighting the blue versus the one?
Oh, it's just to separate it out by each group.
Okay.
So it's a little easier to see that's, I just kind of speak at each time to separate it a little bit.
I went on the third page of the expense listing, the $12,000, $50 charge for educational consulting call letter session, it says.
Who is that under now?
It's on, on the detailed expense list. Says side by side educational consulting. Description.
Oh, that is, so we are the, um, we house the funds for the WMCS PD. So they send us the bills and then I pay them for them. So that will be reimbursed back through the state.
Okay. So we do that. Cecilia, is this a new charge for the Trafarah Chromebooks charging cards? I thought we approved that already or is this a separate one?
It was, so it was on purchase order and then they just billed us in the last few months, but they were sending the invoices to Serena's email, so I didn't get them. And so that's why it's on this month's bill, on this month's list of bills.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we weren't paying it twice.
Yep, nope, you're good.
Jumping change. Motion to approve bills. I'll second.
All favor? Opposed? Prove the bills. All right, correspondence, I think I saw one. Thank you. I have the handy dandy minute timer. And it, it raises a lot. And several people said, we didn't even know what's going on. Well, yeah, I think you would. So. Okay, Chris, that would like to.
I wanted to address the board today and a few things that I previously brought up but haven't gotten resolution on. First of all, I would like the board meetings time to be adjusted to later start him to better serve the community that it's supposed to be representing. Having five o'clock PM meetings on Monday afternoon while most of the working class community that it serves is still working and can't attend, it doesn't seem right. This is the eighth time that I'm standing in front of the board asking for the time to be adjusted, please. I'd also like standard based grading removed and reverted back to traditional letter grading. I would like for the board to anonymous anonymously toll or poll the teachers and ask what they would prefer within their classroom. Both high schools use the traditional letter grading system. I believe we need to prepare our children for their futures at Glacier or Flathead. I've had conversations with teachers and administration about this and the best argument is, well, the less fortunate kids would feel bad or this generalized systems helping the kids who need it. Well, that, well, what about the super smart kids? Why aren't we acknowledging them and their advanced, their advanced achievements? Now that we have parents on the board, do you know what percentage of P is? Do you know what percentage in NP is or an AB for that matter? Do you know by looking at your child's report card or start testing where your child needs to improve with that? The third thing I'd like to ask, is my understanding that. About two minutes.
Thank you. It, it was. Thank you, thank you. All right. So this, the West Valley Parent Teacher Organization report, do we have anybody here for that? Not today. How about the teachers?
Yes. Oh, oh.
Listen, I'm actually planning this week and I'll be really great, but I was here just cleaning out my classroom and giving reports and I thought you guys really need to see some of these reports because they're so exciting to see the growth in our kids. So, um, in kindergarten first and second, we do aims web testing. And for kindergarten and first, that's one-on-one with an adult. And then for second, it's on the computer. And so kindergarten, we do early literacy and a numeracy test. And this shows where our kids came to us. And green is benchmark, that's where we want them. And so you can see their growth from fall to spring. And I'd always be happy to visit with you more about it. I don't want to go into great detail now, but I'd like to show you how much growth our kids are making. But this is kindergarten. That's early literacy and I was just so excited by all of the great levels. This was amazing. And our kindergarten teachers talked a little bit about this. We tried a new program called Roots in kindergarten that really gets to the foundation, those needs that they still come to us with, that we need to fill. And they just did an amazing job this year. And then this is first grade. And I'll start with literacy again. Good growth in first grade. See, see how that, rather than the yellow, it's shrinking. And then second grade. And I really think the foundation they're giving kindergarten and first is really helping once they get to second grade two. We're just really building those holes with our intervention programs. And then here's math. Really fun to see and I just thought you guys should get to see some of that too. And then I think most of you know, near and dear to my heart are the paraprofessionals because they really, really work hard to get us these results, as do the teachers. And so I know we don't know our budget yet, so we really can't change anything at this point. But one thing I wanted to do was just see if you've seen the paraprofessional pay scale and mention that it takes them thirty years to get to the top of their scale. And just one thought I had about that. The possibility of narrowing that so it just doesn't take as long to get to the top of their scale. Maybe that's one way that we can meet some of their financial needs. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Triangles on there, are those representative of?
Yes.
The number of students, I couldn't read.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So green is, it is, it's all the number of students and the green is where the, where we want the majority of our students have benchmark. And so as you see, the green is growing, the yellow and the red are shrinking. Those are like our title kids and our specialized kids. And so we're getting more and more kids to benchmark is what the triangles are supposed to represent.
So then you go fall, winter, spring.
Yeah.
And then typically coming back in the, you know, the next year, do you typically see kind of the kids kind of regress a little bit?
A little bit of regression usually.
I've been talking to my kids about summer school.
They're pretty excited. It's not, I mean, you see regression, but not to the point, not back to.
Okay.
Thank you.
This will stand by. Yeah, um, first I just want to reintroduce ourselves to Jeff and Stephanie maybe because I think everyone else knows who we are. I'm Mary Kate Dover and I teach sixth grade science and sixth and seventh engineering at West Valley School. And I am also tasked to be the president, actually co-president now. I was the president last year and this, followed this next year, 2022, 23, I am co-president with Bonnie McDonald. And. Yep, Bonnie McDonald, sixth grade ELA in literature. And I'm the vice president and I teach fourth grade. So we just wanted to introduce that. Um, so this is a statement from the West Valley Teachers Association and we do come in as a united front. And I also want to remind you that we have our mission statement that I will make sure the new members get that we started off with the year on a, just a really positive note of working together collaboratively for the students and the teachers and the whole staff. The topic of this statement is school board trustees professional etiquette. Um, on Thursday, June 2nd, a board trustee in quotation marks went right up to the edge of a possible violation of privacy rights, but did not actually cross the line. This is according to Director of Legal Services, Tony Koenig, Montana School Board Association. Mr. Koenig also suggested it might be a good opportunity for one of the MTSPA attorneys to come out and provide training for our school board on privacy and other areas of potential liability for the districts. The West Valley Teachers Association is asking the board to consider the above options and review the following. The Montana Code annotated 2021 and the school district policy 5015. Thank you for your time and desire to model professionalism as trustees representing West Valley School. So I have, we have a copy for all of you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I just have to say, I talked to the powers that be and Helen when I was down there for a training session on Thursday. And they would be happy to come do a training session for our board members whenever, whenever we get another board member. As we'll wait, um, we'll get everybody on board. They'll be happy to come up and do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Does the, uh, the West Valley Teachers Association, do you guys submit kind of any of your collective thoughts back to the board on an annual or basis or any of your desires or wants out of the board annually? Does that make sense?
Not in a formal.
Not, yeah.
That might be something to consider just to say, hey, you know, this is what you guys are thinking. To be able to present it to us, to get some insight from, from all of you on things that we could, you know, try to put on, you know, list or projects that we could assist with.
Great, we'll work on that for next year.
There you go. Summer school probably won't be.
Thank you, anybody else? Principal's report, I see Richard back there, oh, both of you, who wants to speak first?
So, yeah, we rounded out the year, you know, ended last week and put the, put the lead on what was mostly considered the hardest year we've had in a very, very long time. But a lot of positives like Tanya presented. Right now, we're working on scheduling, which has been kind of a tricky situation just with the, kind of the way that our staffing is going to shake out and things like that. We did not this year for the first time put teachers' names on who was going to be, you know, whose class next year. And the reason for that is because there, there's going to be such a tremendous number shuffling, I feel like. Our enrollment numbers are incredibly hard to predict. They have been since COVID. I think there's been kind of a switch to some private school. There's been a huge shift of people moving in and it's been incredibly hard to pinpoint exactly where teachers are going to be and where students are gonna, are gonna basically need services. We, for example, had a really, really small kindergarten with like sixty-eight kids, sixty-five to sixty-eight kids. The class in front of that went up to ninety-nine at one point. Then that we hit a hundred in second grade. That class is, is kind of slowly maybe going the other direction and so we just don't know where things are gonna land that way. But we are very, very proud to the academic growth that Tanya showed. Because what, one thing too about that is that it also changes every benchmark session, the standards that it looks at, or not the standards, but the, uh, the path to benchmarking. So it's not even that, you know, we had like, oh, that many more kids at benchmark, it's harder to get there the further you go. So it's like exponential type thing. Which is super, super good. Yeah, so we're right now, we're looking at para assignments for next year, looking at where, you know, set the best team, set the best football for that. Yeah, it's a lot, lot going on right now.
When you have that, when you have that type of change year over year in numbers, I assume that different teachers are teaching their first grade one year and the second, how do you?
So that, that's the challenge because every year I've been here, we've had to make some move with sliding a teacher down or some moving a teacher around to cover the amount of sections we needed. As an example, too, three years ago, I think it was, yeah, about three years ago now, we were gonna run with four kindergartens with about eighty, I think we had eighty, eighty-one. So we were gonna have about eighty in each class. And then we had, three days before kids were going to show up, we had seven more registered, which bumped us up to eighty-eight. And we felt like it needed to have five sections. And so then all of that shifted. This same year, I think, or maybe it was the year later, we had a situation in third grade where we or that was this year, actually.
It was a dash.
Yeah, that's right. We, we had to move a teacher up to third grade because of enrollment. So we really, really wish that people would register. Before the last week of school, yeah. It's just so hard to predict. But, and so what that does then is makes the teachers who placed kids in those next, you know, years teacher where they felt would be best, then they have to go back to the drawing board and redo it. So we felt like rather, and then parents get disappointed, they call upset, they say, I was supposed to have this teacher, you know, or whatever. You have to explain, you know, twenty times, well, this happened because of this or whatever. So, yeah, it's been, it's been pretty tricky that way, but.
Is the, uh, is the registration, because my wife passed, if you go do it. Now I'm, now I'm experiencing the, the pains of that, but is there other options besides doing online? You know, or it just kind of feels like I've gone through, I'm like, first, I guess I got my first certificate. Yeah. Or is it gonna be easier next year, once the kids are kind of, was it difficult this year because it was a new system or something?
I think the new system makes it a little bit more challenging just because it's new to everyone, you know? But I, I do feel like, uh, you know, that in the office, they're more than willing to help, you know, solve that if there's an issue with like, oh, I first certificate, they, they do a great job of walking you through that. I don't think there's a better one. The ones that we've used in the past, and I also think it's hard because the office closes down, which is a huge kind of thorn in my side because then people wait where they say, okay, I'll just go register in August. Hopefully the online system helps with that because they can register all the time. So that's one benefit to it. But yeah, it's, it's super hard. You know, have a plan going forward and then, oh, just kidding, you know, we have these, and these people moving in too. I kind of feel like maybe they're buying house or they're, they're building or whatever. And so it's not on their minds or they're getting an apartment, it's just not on their minds until they're like, oh, it's August twentieth, like I gotta go register. They show up with four kids. So it's, it's pretty impossible.
Yeah, because I don't think that the online worked well on a, like a phone.
Yeah.
Which was kind of, I think is a challenge for a lot of people, because I think most people had it too. They maybe have a computer, but they haven't turned it on five years or something.
Yeah, exactly. I went through the same thing with my son, my son's incoming kindergarten year. And it was a, it was a bit challenging for, you know, because I also have an infinite campus login as a staff member and as a parent now. And so they crosswired for some reason and, yeah, I was like logged in as a parent to, you know, just trying to do like work.
I can't do anything.
I know, yes, yeah, in both ways. And then it gave me like, yeah, I mean, long story short, I, I don't know if there's a better, I, I like the online option, but maybe if it were better, easier on mobile.
Mark Wilson still here?
No.
I saw you in the chat. But overall, I think enrollment's kind of our big, our big unknown every, you know, every year. We don't know why it's so much lower either, you know, with like kinder, because fourth grade's also very low, you know? So I, but it's sandwiched in there, it's like a second grade class that hit a hundred and a third grade class that, well, I guess that's for next year. But, um, yeah, so first grade was hit ninety-nine, but then it's you have a class of sixty-eight, so it's how do you staff that? It's gonna be, there's gonna be teachers moving all over the place, I'm sorry. At night, I guess.
Tina Blair, middle school principal. And, and we are also just wrapping up the year and gathering the data from this past year and see what the growth was and where to put emphasis on next year and lining up with, um, you know, with the new math curriculum. It'll be interesting to figure out where to, um, put the emphasis on within those points in that program. And the teachers looked through that before it was purchased and I think I have a pretty good idea. And also looking at behavioral data across the year, what types of things happened, where they happened, where we get the reports on. And then we'll take those items to the leadership team this summer and the teachers can help work on that. And they will come up with ideas to take to the larger team to make choices on for next year. And looking at furniture and things, we're setting up another classroom, so bringing another math teacher in, so setting up one more classroom. And getting those items ordered last year, it took a long time for things to come in. So we will pull it together on the way there and, and hiring is almost complete. And also waiting for the budget to come in so we can plan the trainings for next year and what that's going to look like. You know, people are anxious to sign up for different trainings and things. Right now, it's only anything that has to travel or anything to it and just watch and wait and see what that budget looks like. That comes along. That's about it right now, just reading through the strategic plan again. That comes along, and that's about it right now. Just reading through the strategic plan again to get goals ready, you know, planning to meet with Cindy Fisher in July, and then go forward from there. So just kind of rolling into a new year. We did have the students, I think I mentioned last time, for the first time, they, they chose their electives online, and so I haven't hit the big go button yet that all those in and tells us how many didn't quite fit, it would maybe have to be hand done, but in the past, we've done it all by hand, so this will be good. And speaking about Infinite Campus, I don't know how many of you have downloaded the app, but as a parent, it's a lot easier to work on after downloading the app on my phone. So any Infinite Campus items that you're doing as a parent are easier on the phone if you have the app. I have my app set for all kinds of alerts as a parent too. It tells me when things later, but it can be pretty handy. And in the past, for registration, we would have papers packets out here, and we tried to count how many were taken to try to get an idea about how many kids might be coming, and some wouldn't come back or some. So I'm hoping the availability online can help those people who are moving or in transition, that maybe, you know, coming here to actually pick up a packet, you can instead have access online. We'll see if that smooths out. If you want to see the data overall, I put some information together, that you can find that same information on the Flathead County Superintendent of Schools website about kids coming and going and the overall effect of how many. We keep pretty much the same percentage, right around eighty to eighty-two percent of all kids in our district that could be attending here, attend here, and then it has fluctuated between, you know, sixteen and eighteen percent going somewhere else or so, maybe homeschool, private school, and that number stays pretty steady. The time that it didn't, if you go back to the recession time between two thousand six and two thousand nine, countywide, about three hundred kids left the private schools and showed up that same amount in the public schools. So if we head in that way again, we can anticipate, we probably will see student growth, even though we might think, oh, the housing might stall. You know, what happens is you get a bump coming in off of that, families that maybe either having to, needing to incomes, not homeschooling, or not according to private schools. So just something over time that even through this growth, the same percentage of our is, is choosing to attend and, and the same percentage choosing homeschool or private school at this time, just kind of a whole study. But you can find that on the county superintendent's website, what's happening.
I'd like to compliment Tina on the eighth grade graduate, uh, grade three promotion ceremony. I thought it went really well. It was very quick, forty-five minutes, then we were out the door, but the kids had practiced in the morning and knew just what to do. And they be, I mean, it was just, it went up like hot work, and that's, that's not a happen. So I'm.
He, many times make life worse.
Yeah, she had some really good backup.
And thanks for those of you that could be there. It's, it's, I think it's a great way for that community to see who staff members are, board members are, just also a chance to thank you for your input.
The only thing I'd comment is that we've got to teach those girls how to walk in heels.
I can tell it might be your first time.
Yeah, I know Mark snuck out too, but both of Wilsons did an amazing job, so I'm hoping, thank you to both of them.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah.
Put the phone down.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
So I'll make mine pretty quick. I know last special board meeting, we had some security, you know, conversations and different things, and so Calispell School District, and I've seen this gentleman too, he's a national presenter, and he's a security expert and mostly in schools. He's worked for the FBI, he was a special, he was a, what do you call those guys that work for the president, Secret Service agent? And so now he does consulting work for schools, and so they're gonna bring a man, it's called S E C Consultants, and so I can get you a copy of this too. And send that to you. And this is a proposal that they put together for Calispell School District, but what he does is he comes in and he does a complete evaluation of your school, from policies that you have to physical, you know, everything physical as far as the school's concerned and safety, and it's pretty, pretty comprehensive, you know, when they've done it. So I've listened to this guy at conferences and very thorough, you know, in his work. And so what he would do is come in and do that, then he would give you a report of what he sees in your school that's good, things that you need to work on, and then then you can pick and choose the things that you feel are, you know, well, one that you can afford to do, I guess I should say, and maybe find ways to, to be able to do it within your school. So it's, it's two thousand dollars per school, per site to do it. This isn't an agenda item necessarily, because it's under the ten thousand dollar mark. I would just want to get some feedback from you guys if you think it's worthwhile to do. I believe it is. I think you're gonna get a good comprehensive evaluation of the school, back from it. I do think that, I think Calispell's doing it with all their schools, and I'm not sure. It's going out to all the outlying school districts, and he's gonna be coming here. I don't know the exact date yet, but sometime in the summer, so he can tie it in with that as well. Now, there is one thing to know that MSGIA, their insurance group, if you go with them, there's a virtual tour of the school that that person can do, this person can do, and that's free. I don't know that you're gonna get the same exact result necessarily from it, but it would be a, a free, you know, service if you stay with that insurance company. So if you don't, then it's not. So it also.
Person, but virtually.
Same person, yeah, same person. And then you can also, I think there's a discount if they come and do it in person too, if you stay with that insurance. So just a side note, you know, for that too as well, but I'll make some copies, I'll just send it to you electronically, actually, so you guys can see that. And so what it's about, he's got four or five people that work with him too, but very, you know, top notch, you know, as far as consulting work goes for that kind of thing. So discussion on it?
Well, I think it's a great idea. And I, I think two thousand dollars is well worth it to get, you know, kind of a full onsite refresh and opinion from a professional. I think that seems like a great value to me.
I agree.
We could spend too much money to keep our kids safe.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. I'll look into it, and then we'll look into the insurance part or two to see if it's a, you know. This is not an agenda item.
No, no, not today.
I don't think it has to be. It's under the ten. It sounds like you guys are okay with doing it, so I, we can just do it. It's not something, it's under the ten thousand dollar mark.
I wouldn't ask where it shows up in the budget.
Cindy Rich will be addressing that. You could use us for funds for that too. And just one other thing, you can see the shops going in over here. Martell's working on that. We have a little bit of some math work to do, it was a little bit short changed on the smart work there, it'll be fine, it'll be fine. That's going up, and then Phil started to work on some of the things outside, playground equipment, different things, moving some classrooms around, I think it's Richard alluded to, you know, there too. So, yeah, lots of work, plenty to do in the summer, so. In order to that, that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, action items. Consideration, Montana State Fund or MSGIA for workers' comp. So this is what we have in front of us here.
Just seeing this. Sean? Sean and Mac, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on. Mac is on.
I am, I am also unmuted and on.
Great. So we have Sean, Bob, and Mac from Pain West, Sean from MSGIA. They can answer any questions you have as far as, this is for the workman's comp part of the insurance, you know, so you have the, you have the bid there from both companies. One's from Pain West, one from MSGIA, this kind of looks like the MSGIA one, so. There's up, there's some more, there's some more detail to these that, when you look at this, so I'll talk about it, and Sean and Mac, you guys can also chime in on that too as well. So when you look at it, overall, if you look at Pain West, their, their bid comes in at about twenty-three thousand five oh four thirty-five. And the MSGIA one, I believe, is just a tad over thirty thousand total for theirs. Now, when you look at that, so that's a, you know, roughly a seven thousand dollar difference in, in the workman's comp. Some of that is, you have to take into consideration, we have to do a asbestos inspection at the school every three years. You have to do an inspection on that. And so the MSGIA bid, that is included in there for the one year, because you have to do it every three years. Okay, so when you look at that, and the Pain West one for the twenty-three thousand five oh four, it is not included in the price of that. So, and we, we've got a bid from a company to do it, and it's, I, so seriously telling everyone, I want to say it's around fifty-five hundred dollars to do the inspection for asbestos. So.
Yeah, I think they said it was fifty-seven hundred for the inspection.
Every three years, yeah. So you only do it every three years. And so when you start to do the math, there's some other things to configure, and there are two different things. And so I think what I'm gonna let, what the fellows do online there is go ahead and continue and talk about, talk about the two plans, unless you guys have questions beforehand. If you want to listen to those guys first, then we can go, and you guys can choose the insurance. So Mac, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Sounds good. Thank you, Cal. Can, can you guys hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate the time, everybody. Yes, we've been working with Montana State Fund, and we actually do have Susanna Nordal, who's the underwriter, along with Kelly Trudgen from, both of them from Montana State Fund. Kelly's a safety consultant for Montana State Fund. We came in a couple months ago to introduce ourselves, a little bit about what we do. Yes, Cal, you know, alluded to the seven thousand dollar difference, approximately seven thousand dollar difference. The, the factor that we always have to take into consideration is asbestos is gonna cost you fifty-seven hundred for every three years. When you look at that savings over three years with state fund though, you know, it could be up to about twenty-one grand, you know, seven thousand per year. Whereas once every three years, you're making that fifty-seven hundred dollar payment on the, on the asbestos piece. The other thing that I'd like you to take into consideration is Montana State Fund has two dividend programs. One specifically for the safer schools program, and then the, the other, which is more, which you're gonna get probably a little bit more out of a dividend on, is their traditional dividend. Right now, they have approximately a thirty percent look back after three years. So do take that into consideration that approximately thirty percent of that twenty-three thousand dollars pending losses will come back to you guys in the form of a check. And so that's, that's something to take into consideration as well for additional savings and additional income to the district. The other piece that I would like to mention is, you know, we've got the safer schools program, which also has an additional dividend portion on there. I don't know what the return will be on that, but there is the potential for that, kind of depending on the group performance for schools overall. And then lastly, there's always a concern of, of, you know, if, if you're gonna lose anything when it comes to loss control. Kelly Trudgen, she's out of Columbia Falls, and we were talking with Cal, and it's, you know, we want to be there for the school to help the school become as safe as possible. And, and West Valley is a safe school, but there's always areas that we can help and prevent and work towards the prevention of losses. Kelly's done some great work with Calispell School District, and we would, I, I think that would be something that you wouldn't be missing, especially with her being local and being able to do our meetings, you know, on a quarterly basis, monthly basis, whatever works for the school district. We don't want to overburden you. But we want to make it something that's advantageous. So I would, I'd leave it at that unless Susanna or Kelly have anything that they would like to add on their end.
Mac, you know, I'll just make a couple notes about the dividend program that you mentioned. This last fall, we were able to give away, not giveaway, but give back forty million dollars to our policyholders. And when I ran some numbers based off of your, your losses for the year that we provided a dividend on, you would have received anywhere between sixty-five hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred dollars back. And, and that is, that's based upon your individual losses. We want to promote safety, and so we reward our policyholders through our dividend program. Our board votes on it every fall and determines if we are financially strong enough to, you know, give back policyholder equity to those policyholders that performed well and, and promote safety within their workplace. So that is, that is a strong point about our workers' compensation program.
Thank you, Susanna.
I can just add a little bit as far as the safety goes. I reside in Flathead Valley, so I'm local, and like Mac said, and I have two degrees in safety. I have the occupational safety and health and industrial hygiene, and there's twelve of us across the state. So we are local within our communities, and I like to come out and do a little bit of a, a different approach, like if you guys have, need help with just specific items, I'm just a phone call away, and I'm happy to come out and help with that as well. So just the short of it.
Okay, Sean?
Go ahead. Yep, that's great. So thank you, Cal, and West Valley School Board for working with the MSGIA since nineteen ninety-two. So you've been a long-term member of our program in the workers' compensation area, and I will tell you, just like Mac has complimented you on West Valley having a really safe working environment, we've done great things partnering with the school district and have consistently seen really good trending for the school district. You know, this last school year, you had some trending up, you had about forty-five thousand dollars in claims in the current school year, which is atypical for West Valley. And just one thing to keep in mind, that, you know, the MSGIA's got a multi-tiered kind of rating, a reward program, and that loss, you're dis, I would say disqualified the district from this next year from receiving another ten percent off on the premium, and that's about three thousand dollars. And when I look at where we were kind of in the rating process, you know, we came in at about thirty thousand, thirty thousand and change. The state fund threw some very aggressive underwriting with some pretty high swing in values to kind of get close, got underneath us at about twenty-three five. But if you take off the cost of asbestos, you know, even if it's just once every three years, if you look at the fact that at least every other year, you've been qualifying for that additional ten percent off, which is another three thousand. And our quote actually includes volunteer coverage for all of the district's volunteers already. And what I've consistently seen in state fund proposals is that that underwriting doesn't include the rating right up front for volunteer coverage. And so if you take those three things into consideration, most years, not just the most aggressive year, but just the way that the MSGIA prices our school districts consistently every single year on a competitive basis, West Valley's gonna come out ahead, consistently ahead. And so the other thing to consider is the, the way that claims are handled for experience modification factors. So in the work comp environment, you're always compared against your peer groups, and so one is average, and when you're below one, you're better than average. And West Valley consistently has been below one. In our environment, in the MSGIA's environment, we value consistency in pricing, because we believe school districts would much rather see consistent numbers, both trending up and trending down without volatile adjustments on a year-by-year basis, whether that be in rates or in experience modification factors, which is a multiplier, if you will, to your. Whether that be in rates or in experience modification factors, which is a multiplier, if you will, to your premium. And so the NCCI, which would be a state fund used carrier for calculation of that modifier. Uses three years of experience. And so if you're trending really well, you're going to get a great advantage. And you're going to see some steep drops in that experience modification factor. But if you see higher-than-average claims, like maybe twice your annual premium. You're going to see the opportunity for some really steep upticks in that NCCI environment. And so our formula again has taken a lot of that volatility out. And again, you benefit both ways, I think, a slow ride up and a slow ride down. But as Cal mentioned earlier, we've got some partnerships with some really heavy-hitting security companies around the country. One of them being SEC. They're actually on retainer with the MSG for MSG school districts. In our workers' compensation program, you can you can get that provided service that Cal talked about on a virtual basis. Save yourself two thousand dollars. Get Jason Russell, the same president and CEO to. You know, whether he's walking through with FaceTime and seeing your school district at the same time as looking at a two-dimensional blueprint. Talking to your staff about the procedures, you're still going to get that same high-quality report. You're just not going to have the cost element to it. And so there's another opportunity for you to create some real value with the MSG proposal. And if you've got claims that qualify for early return to work. Your district can get another check for up to three thousand dollars, just over three thousand dollars directly written to the school district. Just for doing the right thing and helping your injured workers come back in a light-duty format while they're healing up. And so all of those things are going to create value well beyond a seven thousand dollar difference on a one-year basis. While at the same time creating consistency and stability for a new administrative team. Not just next year, but the year after that, and a new administrative footprint for your school board. I know it's always changing. We work with different school board members every single year. But the one thing that we always provide is consistency, consistent professionalism. All of the risk managers that work in our program are certified playground inspectors. They also have industrial hygiene. One has industrial hygiene certification. Out of the great, great university down in Tech with a master's in industrial hygiene. Phenomenal individual that travels the great state for us. So I see a lot of benefits and experience in our world matters. You've got an adjuster that works specifically for the West Valley School District. If any one of your employees got hurt, they've got someone who's got over twenty-five years of experience that's going to get them to the best medical provider. Right away. There's no question about it. She's exceptional, exceptional, exceptional. And I can't say that for every carrier in the state, but I can say it for my group. Experience matters, and that's what you've got with the MSG and have always had. One of the reasons for success, the other reason is the picture that I see of all your staff in the room, really committed to that. And so I hope that you look favorably upon our proposal. I think it has some real value, and I think that gap that you're looking at gets closed really fast. If you just look at some of the bottom-line print and understand, if you're in a year where you've got losses that exceed fifty percent. The state fund's dividend schedule has a tendency to phase out as your losses get larger. And so you're not necessarily going to qualify for those every single year. At least that's what we've seen with other school districts in the state. And I believe that's a fair assessment. So Cal and board members, thank you for your time, and thank you very much so for working for us, working with us since nineteen ninety-two. Great proposal. I hope you select us going forward.
Do you have any questions for Sean or Mac?
So ultimately, the the coverage provided in the event of the injury is the same either way. Different in that regard. It's really about kind of the current premium and the potential for future premiums to move up or down. Based on loss, you know, experience at our school.
And one has volunteer and one doesn't.
What has what?
One has what? The state fund doesn't have volunteer coverage?
We do have volunteer coverage. It's just not built into the initial quote. It's based upon payroll or tracked payroll or assumed wages. But we do offer it.
So our our proposal has the cost fully built in, and so there's no extra charges for volunteer coverage. At any point during the school year, just so the board knows.
Mac, do you have an estimate on what volunteer coverage would roughly run? I know there's probably a broad range based on hours and and number of people using it, but.
Yeah, I think that's a that's a great question. It's a very, very small amount. I know Susanna's probably got a number on the top of her head just looking at your guys' last few years. But I'll let I'll let her speak to that because I know it's going to be, it's pretty minimal.
Based on the numbers, I'm I'm thinking about five hundred dollars.
So is is Payne West, are they specifically. Interlinked with the Montana State Fund, or are they just serving as our advisor for both routes? I guess I'm trying to get, you know, somebody else's professional opinion on this.
Yeah. So as Payne West, Payne West is a broker. So we get the opportunity to work with numerous different carriers. Whether it be Montana State Fund, whether it be MISPL, whether it be AmTrust, whether it be Liberty Travelers. We have the ability to work with all, and we bring the best partnership to the table along with the best price. And that's that's something that we've done for a long time. We actually used to work with MSGIA in years past, a lot of their stuff, not on the workers' comp. But on a lot of their other stuff until the most recent, this most recent year in which we no longer work with MSGIA. But in general, we have the ability to, and that's what how we work is as a educator. And as a consultant on to what coverages are in place. Along with trying to find you that most competitive rate on top of that.
Do you have an opinion?
It's really hard to determine one from the other because, you know, the numbers are there. You can see the numbers in there clear, right? You know what's going to cost you, you know what the, you know, the the coverages are essentially the same, you know, we're going across the board. Albeit, there are some built-in incentives, obviously, and you can get those if you reach a certain, you know, threshold for getting them. That doesn't mean you're going to get them every time, even necessarily, you know. So I mean, if you just look at the straight numbers, you'd probably say, you know, it would be the view to go with, you know, Payne West. Because it's a little less expensive, right? If you go with, you know, some of the other things that Sean was talking about, there's there's pluses to that side too, you know, when you look at it. So it really depends upon. If you just if you're just comparing apples to apples, they are pretty much apples to apples. I mean, the price is less for the one than it is for the other. You know, however, we have been with, you know, Payne West for, by the way, says it's nineteen ninety-two. You know, so you're looking at, you know, thirty years, you know, being with a company essentially, you know, and so. So I mean, I I I don't want to give an opinion on who I think I would pick.
Did you say with them a painless or the MSGIA?
We pay.
Because that used to be under Payne West. Is that correct?
Actually, actually, it's Cal MSG since nineteen ninety-two for work comp. You're correct. MSG since ninety-two.
Did I say Payne West? Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Slip of the tongue.
Mac, I have one more question for you, if you can still hear me. Do you guys have incentive incentive-based programs as well to save us premiums each year if we meet certain standards?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a couple of pieces of that, one being the dividends that we've already alluded to. In which, as Susanna had highlighted, somewhere into the range of this year, you'd be getting around a sixty-five hundred dollar to a twelve thousand dollar check. Due to your guys' history. The other piece too, you know, there's just little things. We have quite a few schools that recently. Applied for a Kelly, what was that? There was a, what was that called?
The Grower Growing a Safer Montana Grant, yes, for schools.
Thank you. And quite a few schools that that applied for that, they ended up getting anywhere between thirty-five hundred. Or I think it was like eight hundred dollars to like up to thirty-five hundred dollars. In in grants for PPE for their a lot of their shop classes. So, yeah, there's there's some, there's a lot of, there's a handful of built-in opportunities with that. One of the other things too is we have through Payne West, we have safety videos, thousands of safety videos. Along with through our video-on-demand program, along with our succeed program, which is all free to the the school districts. And which we can help, you know, line up safety posters. We can help with the trending on any claims and help bring that to the forefront and figure out how to best. I guess, put it out in front of the teachers and the and the staff as the as the best way to protect themselves.
Mac, can I, do I just want to speak a little bit about our return-to-work program? So the if you have early return-to-work with us, it's the claims are discounted seventy percent. If you have a medical-only claim. So you might have large claims, but if you manage those and if you. Have your return-to-work procedure set in place, and there's you have a little waiting period before that even starts. But then that claim is discounted seventy percent. So we do have the potential to save a lot of money when you come with us. And that's what part of my job is, as a safety consultant, is to help come out and train your staff. If they're if they want me to for early return-to-work and then also. You know, risk assessment, and I work more with culture and injury prevention so that, you know, it's a lot easier to manage your. Your claims when you don't have them. And so that's the way that I like to look at it. And so just coming out and doing like a work comp, one-on-one, just the way it works. And when you do have a claim, how to best manage it so that you can really control it the best that you can. And so there's a lot of savings there. So if you have a hundred thousand dollars in claims and you can do the early return-to-work and keep it medical only. Then thirty thousand dollars of that is going to be calculated into premium, not the whole, not the whole claim, if that makes sense. And then also, I just wanted to touch a little bit on the asbestos, and I know that we had talked about inspections. But it's really important for schools to know that you really have to as a designated person in your school district. To manage that asbestos program. And it's not just through a HIRA. A HIRA is just for things that you can see and touch for the schools. But if you, it's really important that you have your maintenance person or whoever your designated person is. Be trained to know the initial part of asbestos so that they know about the other governing bodies. If you have any demolition, or if you have any abatement, or if you have any remodeling to do. Or even if you have insulation torn on a pipe. And they should be really able to walk through semiannually and look at that in between the inspections. So I don't know how your asbestos program runs because I haven't talked to you guys about that or how what that looks like. But there really is a lot more to it besides just inspections. And so just putting that out there.
Our maintenance man, Phil Jackson, he is certified in asbestos, so he can't do the inspection, but he can do the in-between.
Yeah. And and that is also an option too. You can send your maintenance guy to asbestos credit. Certification accreditation school, and they offer in Kalispell. So that is also an option for to do that as well for your inspections.
Well, I think, at least in my opinion, you know, the coverage seems similar. The cost is, by my calculations, lower going with Payne West, Montana State Fund. Montana State Fund isn't a, by any means, a fly-by-night insurance provider. So, you know, I'd make a motion to move forward with Payne West Fund and State Fund.
Dirty discussion.
Just have one more question for the Payne West people. We kind of know what we're getting as far as school safety inspection and and risk assessments. And I know Kelly, that's kind of your side of things too. Can you speak a little bit to that and what we would look forward to on your end of it?
Sure, you mean as far as the risk assessment?
Please.
Sure. So I would come out and and sit down with the school and we could do it as a whole. But then I also can sit down with individual departments, like the custodial department, and really look at the work that they're doing. And let them do the risk assessment, and it will open up opportunities of improvement or areas where they really need to look at. To make the work that they're doing so they have control of the work they're doing and really controlling that risk. But it's just just coming out and having a conversation. So we look at what they're doing and then what can we put in place? To make sure that the things that might happen don't happen. And it's very tailored to what whatever it is that your school's doing. And then I know that that's something that I like to come out and do, but then the annual training stuff, Payne West can handle those with their videos. And then I can do all of the outside stuff as far as the risk assessment, like slips, trips and falls. I've been to a couple of schools, so there's a couple of different ways that I look at tackling that. And talking to the staff and talking to the the recess monitors and seeing some things that we can put in place for that. So it's really drumming down what's going on to look at the root causes of things and and seeing if we can put things in place. And really building up the culture to do work more towards prevention.
And Sean, can you compare the aspect from what you guys have provided us and what that looks like currently?
Yeah, for sure. Boy, Annette Satterley is the person that coordinates with your Phil Jackson, the real Phil Jackson, as I call him. As far as his his asbestos accreditation, keeping him as the point person for the district. But we've done a combination of in-person, in-person trainings with staff. And we provide a safe schools platform, which is what I would consider to be probably one of the best content platforms at school-based. It's specifically designed for school districts. And you've got all exposures, not just work comp exposures. It's got board training opportunities on there. It's got property and liability exposure trainings and work comp. So it really kind of gives you everything. In addition to just the workers' compensation stuff. When Kelly was talking about the types of work that and the types of things that that she sees as a risk manager. It's the type of thing that we did with West Valley years ago. So our risk manager was going through your classrooms, identified that there was ladders kind of down the hall and kind of more of a maintenance closet type situation. But it wasn't convenient. And so what we did is we bought a step ladder for just about every single one of your classrooms. Because we realized that if you don't make safety convenient, it's not going to happen. And so we're trying through the work that we're doing and what we're seeing and what we saw in the West Valley School District. If you walk around, I bet you don't have to walk into two different classrooms and you'll see a little silver three-step step ladder. With a cool little support for the knee brace because we didn't want your staff to have to climb up on a chair or a table to do some work. We wanted to make it convenient. And we've had districts that called and said, hey, we got some new staff or we built a couple of extra classrooms. Can you get us a couple more of those step ladders? You bet. If it costs us a thousand dollars, we have a what we call a targeted accident prevention program. Where we'll spend a couple thousand dollars on a school district to make safety convenient. And we'll do that all across the state. We've done it consistently with West Valley and we'll continue to do it again. We've got CDL training courses that are available on that platform. The the range is is expansive and it's great for new teachers and new staff. Because it can augment what you're doing with your PIR days, which are pretty. Because it can augment what you're doing with your PIR days, which are pretty tight. Getting in front of staff time is really important. And when you can make again, safety convenient with a mixture of on in person and. That online learning that has a really high content value for school district staff. It makes a difference and it facilitates the types of results that West Valley has been able to generate over the years.
I can give a better example of risk assessment. So I was just at a school and I met with one of the departments. And we walked through the work that they do. And we found a lot of things. Well, first of all, that department was having higher injuries. And when we sat down and looked at this this stuff that they were doing and. Conducting this risk assessment, we found out that it was other departments. It was the things that the other departments were doing that was causing the injury of this department. And so it really opened communication of between departments. And what really happens is. Your your use of time towards safety becomes efficient because it's we're actually looking at the work that that's conducting in between departments. And having the ability of going out and just sitting down individually with the departments goes a long way versus. We do have trainings, but having that that conversation of doing risk assessment, like what I I'm trying to think like. Some custodians had really heavy garbage cans that they were lifting and some other heavier furniture from the forties. You know, lying around, that stuff causes injuries. And so when you sit down and talk to the individuals, you start hearing these things of. You know, nobody knows that this person's upset because this is going on and they're not going to tell you until you get to that level. So that's the kind of risk assessment that. I do when I go out to talk to companies and we start from there. And it really starts building the culture and having that consistency of being able to talk really makes a difference. So that's. Kind of what my risk assessment is.
Thank you. I think we have a motion in a second, so.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, call for vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Pain West, again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next. Action item, the resignation of Brent Counselor as a trustee. So we need to accept this resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept Brent Counselor's resignation. Also, I get that some of them are moving, but it is what it is.
Yeah. Right, I I think we we have to, we have typed this in paper again when they see another West Valley trustee gone, we're gonna have to answer some questions. This one was something that was common. No, it was not. Yeah, anyway, we. Will accept this resignation. So all in favor, anybody wanting to discuss it? Okay, all in favor. I, anybody opposed? So it's now been.
Did you raise your hand for discussion?
I just wanted to point out that the agenda that you guys gave us today is not the same as the one online. The resignation of Brent isn't the one online right now. And there's not one posted on the front door either. So there's different, I think, according to the MTSBA legally, I don't know. How you want to move forward on that, but the one online right now does not have Brent's resignation in it. And there's not one posted on the door.
The one currently is emailed to us is that I don't know what's currently on the website.
Right.
They just printed it at home.
So. Yeah. So what happened, actually, I realize what you're saying, Krista. So. He came in Friday morning. And had said, you know, he was planning on resigning and Cal told him he needed to get it to us in writing. And I sent out the agenda and like two minutes later, we get his resignation email. So I revamped it and I took it off the door to redo it. And yeah, so that's what happened on that part. So. That's an error on my part that I re-sent it out the amended agenda to the board, but I didn't finish the process, so.
So you guys go about that. I think it needs to be done. It wasn't on the like agenda for the public.
Correct?
I'm wondering what the MTSBA says.
About that? Would that, I hardly think that would negate the whole meeting, but.
Oh, no.
Surely.
We posted to a special meeting via Zoom like two days.
Yeah, I think legally we'll have to do that, but we'll want to do it as quickly as possible so we can fill the vacancy.
Okay, so shall we do a plan on doing it?
Those are only two action items that were added. Cecilia was just the consideration of resignation and the consideration of vacancy announcement.
Correct, yep.
So if we have a meeting, a Zoom meeting after the forty eight hour. Time.
So I won't be back in town to post it at the school. I can get it out to the paper, but I won't be able to do that until tomorrow. So forty eight hours after that, if somebody can post it at school. So we could do Thursday night, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. As long as it's posted on the website and then posted in the paper, just let us know and we'll get it printed and put on the wall.
Okay. So I can do that first thing in the morning, then get it to the paper. And I believe Laura will be in the office tomorrow, so I can send it to her to print and. And do that.
Can run it down and post it if I need to, too.
So we'll plan a Zoom meeting at what, five o'clock?
Four o'clock, five o'clock.
I'll be in the conference until at least five o'clock on Thursday, so it'll have to be. Five or.
Moving the meetings later. Here's that. On day four six, it doesn't sound like Cecilia's available until later anyway, so.
On this one, I think in order. To change the meeting time, we have to have it be at the end item.
It should be.
Yeah.
Depends on if it's in a policy.
Yeah, and the special meetings you can set.
We can set anytime we want.
So long as we all remember.
Well, you just gotta set.
We can even do, we can even do five thirty on Thursday. Or whatever works for you guys. Just let me know so I can get it.
Six o'clock. Because of this discussion, do we want to put down as an action item two to slide the meeting times? I'm I'm fine with that. It's it's six o'clock works for me.
You're talking about the meeting time.
Right. So I think we just, yeah, let's put it on the agenda. I'm comfortable with that.
So there's going to be two items, Zoom, on the Zoom meeting on Thursday and one of them will be, one of them will be Brent Counselor's. Resignation and the other discussion will change the meeting time for next year. So see, you have that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so going forward. On. Consideration of Elaine Stetson and Katie Bassett resignation.
Yeah, so Wayne Stetson was kitchen aid. She was working there for the last, oh, I don't know how many years now, four at least, I think. And so she is retiring. She's done. So she's bringing her resignation and Katie Bassett was are going to be our language arts teacher at the middle school. And she had some personal issues that came up and she had to resign that. So. We do have a a plan for that as well and we'll bring that to, we can put that on the board agenda as well. The virtual one on Thursday, you know, because there'll be a hiring, I believe, for that. So we can add that to it as well and let Cecilia know who that is. So. That one, so.
Okay.
Anyways, I would, yeah, have you consider the resignation of those two ladies?
I'll make a motion for the resignation of Elaine and Katie.
Katie, any extension? I'll call for vote. All in favor?
Hi.
There's a, you can, you have your cord.
Well, I just got this from Mark.
I think it might be in your bag.
I think. There, the black bag up there.
Oh, yeah. That's probably in there.
That was your resignation. Yeah, I'm just gonna do that.
Okay, we can carry on. I got it on paper to some of that or other stuff.
Okay. Up in it, the only action items, consideration of Better Less.
So we've been working with Better Less for about three years now and it's a professional development they use for our staff. And it's really, it's a good professional development because we really have, it's a prescription for for certain staff members that they can use for specific needs. So if we, let's say we have a staff member who might need some focus area in a particular area of maybe it's classroom management or it's curriculum or things like that. They can work with this group individually, virtually, you know, and so it really has been beneficial and our coaches, our academic coaches have used them. As well and have really gained a lot of experience from them. And so there's also, in this case, there's what they call virtual workshops. And so. They'd be up to two hours and twenty participants can do it at a time. And so it gives you a quicker way to get professional development, that meaningful professional development out of the staff. And what we would do is there's several hundreds of topics that you can pick from. So what we're gonna do is send out a survey to see which exactly the professional development. Avenue we want to take and then we would have that timeframe, teachers could get involved with that. And so. When you do that in those two hours segments, it's virtual, but you have a person there live doing the training. And so it's really beneficial. That forty eight thousand dollars is not what it is. We have a twenty thousand dollar credit. So it would be about twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars for the year. And what we're really trying to do is to make sure, you know, with our budget a little bit in flux right now, we want to make sure that we're using our dollars wisely. And that we're not spending where we, well, we try to do that anyways, but really trying to be as efficient with them as we can. So. For that next year, for all those services, it would it would cost us twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
And that's really reasonable. We have Craig, so we have a twenty thousand dollar credit with them right now. So. That can be used. We can take that out of extra funds as well, you know, and so it's a good use of that. We are going to really monitor our other professional development for the year, different, different areas. And so. But this one, I feel like is real focused. It gives us a real focused look at overall professional development for us now. So I would. Encourage the board to approve the Better Lesson for the school year coming up.
Okay, I guess with the teachers here, what, how do you feel about that Better Lesson? The public influence here. What do you think about that? Is it worth that money or not?
I don't like it. Why? It's not very engaging. We've done it a couple of times.
It's a lot of money. I'm just thinking.
They, it's a lot of information with a lot of different things, so I didn't find it super focused on specific things.
Anybody else?
Is this the, is this what we use? I guess I'm not exactly sure. This is what we've used when we did the PIR and we're in our rooms.
Coaches use it, yes. Coaches use it differently, right. Initially, they offered the one on ones with teachers where you you meet with a person online and the coaches do. To and you can have sessions where they learn and they have certain goals. For example, one of the coaches met regularly with the. With their mentor, the coach mentor in their training and then use that and they do coaching cycles with their pair of professionals to help train them in their job. So you're training the trainer. There's versions where teachers can work with them. On specifics, on their goals and work with a person, a trainer. Work and then go back in. And then there is the group ones. So we had the group ones and you guys can speak to that because there were some comments that came back after the group ones. And so you, that's what you're reflecting on.
That's the one, that's the only time that I've used it. Yeah, so I haven't used it on my own, just more than, I guess, prescribed ones that we were doing as a whole school. During, before school started. I I think that our mentor Claudia Anderson, the mentor uses it. She uses that with the new teachers too. So I think getting input from newer teachers would be helpful, but I think as. I mean, we used it as a group and had some discussion, but we were very kind of separated in our room. Listening and doing that. And there were breakout sessions that we did. It was not, we did a couple of standards based screening. That were helpful. But that's my only recollection of it. I haven't used it on my own, gotten on there and looked around to see what else was available.
Do they give us feedback on engagement?
Yeah, yes, you can get that. And so I think Tina had a question, but I think before we go further on that too, some of it is, when you look at that, you could. One thing you could choose to do is to focus down a little bit is you have a twenty thousand dollars as a credit.
Right.
Wouldn't cost us anything. So we have, we have some teachers and we want to work on specific things. That's one area you could do it. We also have quite a few new teachers that would be, it would be beneficial for them to be involved in that as well. So. It isn't like you have to do the whole package necessarily. You can choose to pick and choose things, but. And Tina, I think, had a little bit more to add on to that. Is that Tina back there? I can't tell.
It is, sorry.
All the coaches, there's no coaches or mentors here right now, but in our CBA, we say that we will have mentor teachers. For our, for our other teachers and I would consider it having been highly effective for those mentoring and coaching teachers. Which is separate, like Cal is saying, from the other aspect of whole group and teaching the entire school. We also need to consider that we left the co-op. So we left the co-op. And and chose to have our own curriculum directors. We left the curriculum co-op and part of the money that we used to pay for the curriculum co-op. We now use for training within our own school and we set up those trainings. So.
Yeah, and none of the coaches or mentors are here tonight, but all of them wanted to continue working with them and felt it's been beneficial for them. So.
We're looking at eight thousand then? Twenty minus twenty thousand credit, right?
No, forty eight minus twenty. Well, when, yeah, you have twenty thousand credit, so right now.
Yeah.
Um, is there time and energy for the teachers to come together and look at other options for. Training and different programs that they would engage in better? I just would hate to be spending so much money that you guys aren't using. I really want to put that money towards things that you pull up. On a weekly basis and really get benefit out of.
I think I agree with something that Cal said about maybe picking and choosing what the money goes to, you know, if the mentors and the coaches and stuff think it's a worthwhile thing, I think that's awesome. But I do think that there needs to be maybe a question put forth to the, just to the regular staff as a, using it as a training tool. Because I have a tendency to agree with Joe. I didn't find it very engaging and I I found that it was one of those things. I know that there's all kinds of resources that we could later on go back and use. Who has the time? I mean, I I don't, I don't, for that aspect, I, I.
We don't have a lot of built in.
Well, I think maybe it's not necessary, but we've gone so much virtual now. And I think I get a lot more out of having someone come in. And I know that could be even more expensive than what you may be paying here, but I know I get a lot more out of.
Yeah.
Personal, you know.
And that was an option with these folks too, because we have one PIR day and we just, it's, it's too expensive to bring them in to do it. I mean, it's, it's a good way to feel.
Right, it's just the way it's flowing. And maybe even sitting like groups or content area, sitting in a room together. So there's a little bit more engagement with that. I don't know. But just sitting in my room, looking at the screen for however long, I just.
Wondering, given the credit, if it doesn't make monetary sense now, because we don't have another thing to replace it at this moment. And then over the next year, really looking at it. Specifically in having all the teachers come together and find something that's more cost effective and for, because next year it'll be forty eight thousand, right? Or we can, or more and applying that money to something that you guys are going to use every day out would be way more appropriate to me.
Well, but one thing you can do too is we don't, you don't have to decide today necessarily. And I can go back and we can, you know, look at. And I can go back and we can, you know, look at, as long as we know the coaches, it's good, it's beneficial for the coaches, you know. And so, we, and we have on there a quantity of 10 for a focus area for a full school year for teachers. That would be mostly for the new teachers, you know, coming onboard. And I say you don't need it necessarily, but we have a pretty strong, well, it's, it's working at being a strong mentor program too. So, that might be something we look at instead of just, you know, putting that in there to the whole 10 teachers that are gonna work with their mentor and get that out of that instead for this year. I think we have to, like I said at the beginning, I think we have to be really cognizant and aware of what we're spending our money on here. Mainly because, well, lots of reasons, but one in particular, our budget percentage numbers are going up, you know. And so, that's, that's just something we have to be mindful of, you know, when we choose this. And that's why, you know, we've looked at this and others that we've used, you know, writing program. We've had Amelia Solberg's come in for the last three or four years and worked with our teachers too, especially new teachers in season one too, to look at, you know, writing over, over time. And so, she's been, we feel like that's kind of starting to run its course, you know. And so, it may be time for some, for some new thinking on different professional development. We also might have to like semi curtail it a little bit, you know, to make sure that, you know, we have enough of the budget to do what we need to do. Like keep the lights on, things like that, so.
And if we don't approve this today, then it would be essentially pushing it out until August.
Yeah, true, you know, and so what we can do, and he's real, they're real easy to work with, you know. And so, that wouldn't be out of the, out of the question. I think it would be better if we could do it now, but I think we could also wait and talk to them a little bit more and then come back to it.
That'd be an opportunity to look at it and reference to the budget too.
Yeah. Yeah. That'd be probably the way to go, just to look at it a little more detail, see if we can. Like I said, you got, you've got $20,000 to use regardless.
So, we'll put it on.
I'll make a motion to put this on hold and not make a decision on Better Lesson today. One second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Hi. I really encourage all of you who are gonna use something like this on a daily basis to put forth some, at least some ideas for us to kind of ponder over as we report in August. Be awesome.
The next one, consideration of contract renewal, Montana Medical Building.
Cecilia, are you still there, Cecilia?
Yeah. So, the Montana Medical Billing is who we bill through, for the Medicaid. I believe it runs with the CSCT, Cal, is that correct?
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, yeah, so they do the medical billing and then it's a percentage and then we pay them for the services that, for, for doing the billing for the Medicaid.
Much do we pay?
It's a percentage based on the amount of claims each month. I think on the second page, it says.
This is something we've had twice even this far back.
Seven percent.
Yeah, and I mean, usually, I think when I pay the bills each month, it's around $100, $130, depending on how many claims. So, it's not an astronomical amount, but it's just the contract renewal. I mean, if we use it one month, the next month we don't, then we don't get billed.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Right. On favor of going with the Montana Medical Building?
Hi.
All right, next one, the consideration of the CSCT.
So.
Comprehensive School and Community Treatment Services.
Yeah, so this is the same one as we use in the past called Alticare, which Alticare is no more, you know. And so, this is the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch. Basically, it's the same, it's the same format essentially as the other one. The only difference is they actually provide their own technology and different things, which we had to do before. So, you provide a space forum, you provide, you know, basic things like a phone in the office, you know, things like that. And then, they hire the workers and the workers we've had that have worked with Alticare in the past have applied with the Boys and Girls Ranch. And so, and would be hired to take over for, doing the same thing essentially that they were doing before with Alticare. So, there'd be no disruption in service as far as that goes. It's all, it's all billed the same way through Medicaid, it's all done the same way. And so, it's pretty seamless. And this, the difference between this one and Alticare, Alticare was a for-profit, this group is not. They're a nonprofit organization, so, and they're in becoming more and more, more and more schools across the state. Also, with, of course, with. So, I did talk to Kim, who's their, one of their main folks in the office there. We talked about a few things as far as, you know, services and personnel and different things. And it sounds like both of the ladies that worked, Rhonda and Rachel would both be coming back to work for them. So, that's, that's a good thing. Any questions?
Questions about the same.
It doesn't really cost us anything.
Other than time for us to do the billing part of it, right?
And we don't have to do that either, really. Yeah, it's mostly just goes through us to them, and so we don't have much to do with that.
Just provide a place for them to be.
Yep. It's actually less because they did, they have their own technology, so we're not gonna provide that, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the CSCT agreement.
Any discussion on this? All right, call the vote on favor?
Alright.
Are you considering to approve BMO card for Kathleen Kuchere, Technology Director, and Cindy Wisher, the new superintendent? So, we're just gonna get them credit cards?
Yep, so they will just be replacing the cards that Mark and Cal currently have, so.
Motion to approve BMO cards for Kathleen and Cindy. One second.
Any discussion? All right, who was in favor? Post? Consideration of the August 8 budget for meeting. Definitely, we just have to set a date for it?
Yeah, typically, it's with the dates of our board meetings, since they're the second Monday of the month. Ours falls on the same, some schools have them later in the year, but, or later in the month, excuse me. So, it's just setting the date for the budget meeting, which will fall on the same, it is our regularly scheduled month, monthly meeting.
We skip July and then we'll go to August for the next meeting.
Yep.
So, this is, well, the next meeting actually will be very big, but following that one, August 8 will be the next meeting after that. No, actually, we'll have a meeting in between here. Have to get the new board now.
Um, but I'll make a motion to consider, or not consider it, but to add the August 8 board meeting and budget meeting together.
Right, any discussion? Some favor?
Aye, aye.
So, August 8. All right, on to the next page. Consideration to give clerk authorization to pay the year-end bills and pay the July bills.
So, this typically just takes place every year, since there's no July meeting. The clerks get the approval to just pay the bills and then, you know, close out the fiscal year and at the end of June and then start the new year in July.
And are you including items three and four in that too?
Yeah, transportation and funds. I think if I remember right, we still approve those things afterwards in August. It was just kind of a pileup of that we approved in August, but.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, she gave me an.
So, typically though, how, you know, like today, how you approve the bills and then I go in tomorrow or I guess next week now and send out the checks. This will give me the authority to do that all at once. And then, yes, in August, then you would go back and approve them.
They're gonna be paid either for.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to give the clerk authorization to give the year-end July bills. And approve the contracts and move funds to perfect balance.
One second.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, here we go, into the consideration of second reading of required policy changes, Cal.
So, I'll make, I'll make a suggestion to the board just going forward, since most of you folks are fairly new on this too and, and your superintendent's gonna be new on this as well, that it, it would probably be who of you to, to have a, a policy committee, especially when you have so many of them, you know, on there. And so, that means you get a couple of people from the board that would be on the committee and then you'd have the superintendent, then they have some staff as well if they, if they choose to do that. So, I've just done it because I've done it for the last 10 years, you know. And so, it really, you know, it's, it's, it's probably better, to be honest with you. Most of them, most of them are required anyways. I mean, so it isn't like it's a, and I guess the way I look at it is, we pay MTSBA for legal advice, so they're giving it to us, you know. And so, when they ask for the, or make these changes, especially the required ones, then it's kind of like, okay, this is what we should do, we have to do it. Now, some of them are recommended, so you don't have to do them necessarily. That's what you have to look at and see, do we need this, you know, in place? So, but I think it would be best, because you're gonna get these probably at least twice a year where you get, you know, 15 to 20, maybe more policies to go over. And I just think it would be best, especially with a new superintendent, to, to do that, to have a committee, you know, that will look at them. And then, that committee would make the recommendation to the board, you know, of what to do or not to do. And they can have that discussion at a board meeting. We've done it that way too in the past at times, you know. And so, for this one, since it was at the end of the year, we just kind of felt for, more of a timely matter, I guess. It would, it would be okay to do this. And you don't have to approve these at all either. I, as I look through them, there are a couple of them that you don't, we don't need. The first one, policy 1010, right there, because we, we don't have a preschool, you know. We're not going to have a preschool in the immediate future, you might somewhere down the road, you know. And so, for now, we don't, we wouldn't even need that policy. The other one would be policy 2167, and that's the correspondence classes. We don't have those, we don't, that's a high school thing for the most part, so it's not needed here at the, at the K8. The rest of them, except for number 11, their policy 2510, I had to do, I would like to do a little more research on that before actually looking at it because the way they did it, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me as I looked at it, you know. And so, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but it just.
I agree. A yearly, a yearly checkup.
Yeah, I wasn't so much that, it was just even how they put it together. So, so other than those three, which were number five, number seven, and number 11, the rest of them, I would recommend the changes and adding to, to the policies.
So, wouldn't be necessary to get a, a committee except for them to discuss.
Not, not for these necessarily, you still could, I mean, moving forward.
The only other thing I'm thinking is that there's three of us that this is the second reading for, right? And I don't know how much time you have to spend with them before the meeting, as well as a new person who's gonna be joining us in the next, well, in the next month.
So, it wouldn't hurt, and you could certainly wait till August too. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing pressing necessarily with any of these policies. Since it's summer anyways.
So, you think it'd be better if we had to have a two-person committee and they would have to have, when they have their meeting, would have to be open, right, or not?
Yes, would be.
Yes, always open, yeah.
It would have to be posted.
Even if it was just a committee of two, that would be going over these.
Right.
Well, it'd be three with Cindy.
Right.
I mean, I didn't, I, I went through these and I think all my concerns that I brought up last time, we kind of discussed already. I think you're right, the wellness one needs a little bit more thought process put into it, but the rest of them, I didn't have any real conundrums with. But I don't want to put pressure on at least those that haven't visited with these before.
I mean, I read through them all today.
Yeah.
Looked over your notes at the same time.
No. Yeah, definitely, guys. I'm not entirely sure of the, you know, number five and number seven have enough, needing to really put a lot of angst into pushing them off into the future. I think the only one that maybe needs revision or at least some more eyeballs on it, is the school on this one. But if everybody's comfortable, I'd be happy with it.
I sure would be, I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on some of these, they're all so much as small enough little changes, even the ones that aren't, I just totally like it.
I would, I guess I would say on five and seven, if they're not needed, I don't know if there's really a reason to add them.
Well, for maybe, a lot of them might need it though, because a lot of them do it in the high school, the graduation requirement. That's a lot of them did.
And the thing about that is, you can always adopt those policies at any time, so.
So, should we eliminate, eliminate the ones that don't?
I would, well, if you're gonna eliminate, I would just say eliminate five and seven, 11, and you're not eliminating, you're just, you're just postponing it until. Table any.
Right. So. I don't think it's that myself. I'd like to see the others on board, I don't think there's any point to kicking these other stuff.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah. Is there any harm in having five and seven on the books? I mean, we've obviously revised them as we adopted those programs anyway, but.
Not really, not really. Other than some people might think of it that, that most people look at the policies anyways, but they might think, oh, you've got this policy, how come you don't have a, you know.
Yeah.
Have this surprise, you know what I mean? So, I don't, I don't, no, Justin, I don't think there's any logic putting them on there.
So, the only one we really want to reconsider and look at is that school. Yeah, so the others we could just accept as they are. What do you think, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that five and seven aren't applicable, you might as well just adopt them to a later date once they become applicable. So, we won't adopt it now.
All right, we'll move on. Motion to approve the policies, number six, eight, nine, 10, and 12 through 24 as written. One second.
Any further discussion? Oh, oops. Tina?
I just want to share something on one of them, on policy 5314 on substitutes. I don't have my glasses on, so I'm guessing that's what that is. And it, reading through that, it says something to the effect of that the principal will assign the substitute. So, for the certified staff, that the principal will assign it. And the current process is that the board has approved the pool of substitutes. And then, we have a computerized online system. We approve the leave request, the absence request, unless it is sick leave that automatically goes out to the pool of subs. So, if they're registered within that, then they receive the notification that there is an opening and they accept it or not. So, where it says, principal. So where it says, principal, I would like to see it, see something like principal or district designate me, because it happens through the clerks in the office too. It's not just Richard and I that do that. The office manager or the clerks also help with that more often than not. We are approving personal leaves and, you know, vacation trainings, but sick leaves go automatically in. And we don't actually approve each sub every time. The system that we've designated to do that does that.
And they designate them to the appropriate rooms, or do you guys review that before they show up and start working?
It, it, they accept a job, right, an opening. Now, they may come and it may have changed in the time, which is what we've seen with staffing. It may change. You know, it says that a teacher shall not designate their own substitute, whatever. And you know, I get that so that we know that someone's out and someone's coming in. But our system that we have adopted is school district frontline. It's called frontline. Frontline manages that for us. We get notifications, we see it on our apps. We're on top of it. We know who's coming in for which job. But we aren't, we don't sit there and prove each and every.
Well, I'm wondering if in the legal jargon, if shall approve or shall arrange that program you guys have arranged.
Does it use the word arrange?
It says shall arrange. So the principal shall arrange for the substitute to work for an absent teacher. And then the second part down below too says the principal shall arrange for the substitute to work for the absent employee. So.
It's almost like the district.
Yeah.
Arranges. But I just wanted just to be aware of that, that if there's any notion that we're actually placing and approving every single one, we do shifting and sliding, but we are not placing each sub. It is the district system that we have purchased.
The idea behind this was that, so the principals have to say it, not the employee, correct?
So. And the change they're making here is they changed it from teachers to employees. All substitute employees will be required.
Yeah, ones for certified above, which is our staff, our teachers and stuff, and then classified down below as employee. I guess.
They're using teacher over and over there. Really, it should be certified staff.
Certified staff.
Cancers and others that are certified that are not teachers.
I don't think it'd be inappropriate to just defer this one as well to August. Yeah, I think we can wordsmith it. I think it says what we need it to. It just needs to be wordsmithed so that, clearly states that, that program that you're utilizing is actually directed by you.
And I wrote through it, is it appropriate for me to share it with the board? I wrote that one with some suggestions on it. Is it appropriate for me to share it with the board? Do I need to send it to Cindy Richard?
Yeah, just, yeah, just send it to me. I think I have it.
I can send it to you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
It's appropriate for you to share anything you want with us, so, just so you know. We just can't discuss whether or not we're going to do what it says, so. Okay. Well, we will need to probably vote on our, second and then knock that down and then we remake another motion for the ones that we are going to.
Okay, so shall we vote on the motion that is, which is to what?
Six, eight, nine, 10, and 12 through 24.
And that are good.
We'll have to make a second motion for that, or a different motion for that, so. We'll have to re-motion, we'll have to vote this one down and then remake another motion.
Okay. Let's do it. All those in favor? All those against it?
Aye. Okay.
All those.
New motion. Motion to approve policies six, eight, nine, 10, 12 through 18, and 20 through 24. Second.
All right, in order discussion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. So now we'll go on to the consideration of the second reading of the new recommended policy. Um. And.
Yeah. So these are very new policies. So they, you can approve them on the second reading. My recommendation would be to wait until August. You know, I think you, you know, it used to be on three readings on these, you know, and so, I just think it gives you a little more time to go through them. And there's, I, I've gone through them several times. There's nothing like, you know, outlandish in them or anything like that. I will say, I think we have a misprint on 27. It should be policy 7265, I believe.
Oh.
That's true.
And actually on the new. Well, it's listed on the actual Google Drive document as 7625, but it's on the actual policy. The other thing I'd like to see is some wordsmithing of the, title of the policy 3305. I know what it's getting at. It's the opposite of what it kind of states, but maybe we could.
We can talk.
Is that an MTSA title that we have to keep?
I don't know that for a fact.
We are not secluding and we're not restraining it.
Yeah, so on my, on my hard copy of the policy, it's 7265. So I would, my recommendation would be just to, to table these for the August board meeting.
Motion to table policies 25 through 27. A second.
Discussion. Do we want to try to put together like a committee or something to go over these between now and August? And that can deal with some kind of going, you know, research more going forward with Cindy?
Yes, I think that'd be a good idea. Although you're going to have to, July is typically kind of that non, non goes on in July. So you either have to do, she's not going to be here until, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it won't be until July sometime in July. So you'd probably need to schedule something for early August, you know, because you're going to, if you want to get these approved, they don't have to be approved at the first August board meeting necessarily.
We could, we could set up the committee at the August meeting actually.
You could.
And then.
We're making a committee.
Right. And Cindy would be, maybe you have her feet on the ground at that point, make it easier.
Yeah, we could maybe give her a heads up that these are going to be reviewed and be good for her. Yeah, I like it.
Okay. We will have, have a, a committee for on the 34th, on the South Park, at August meeting. Need a motion.
I think if we need a motion for that, we just need a motion to,
Table.
To table these, because we already have them in the second, so.
All those in.
Aye.
So we have been tabled. All right, yeah. Executive session has been preempted because we just thought it wasn't very good at this particular time to do that. There's a number of reasons. So we are going to acquit the executive session right now. So, that one, and that just gets eliminated probably. Like with the board meeting, it shouldn't affect anybody as far as, the on the agenda or not, I don't think. Okay, information items. April cash reconciliation and April fund, 115, 1182 reports, April, May 50 report. We have these. What's the idea if these have been fixed? Were they errors before?
Are you looking at the cash reconciliation?
Cash report reconciliation for April?
Yeah, so those were stemming from the audit fixes. So when I initially did it, I did it backwards with the county instead of, so it's hard being on, coming from the county side, the way we did our journal vouchers through the county, and then having to flop it now and do it on the school side, it's been a little challenging. So that's why, it looks as bad as it is right there. But going into May, it's fixed correctly now, so. It's just been a few months of trying to get all those audit findings.
Okay, on the next page, what's the audit correction of 61,000?
No, it was, 30,000, but since it was done backwards, it duplicated itself.
All right, just we don't really need. So no motion come down. And then the second information item, do you want to show with us about that, Cal, that OPI scheme with summers?
So basically, they, you know, with the, with the pandemic, everything, all lunches were free and everything was done that way. And so that's gone away. So next year, you're back to the, applying for the free and reduced lunches like we have, you know, before pre-pandemic, you know, and so that's a offshoot of that basically. So there's no, there's no free summer program either this year. So that's, that's something the federal government, you know, just doesn't want. So we typically weren't about 20% I think the last time we did free and reduced lunch, you know, was one of the reasons why, what we got, S R money was, we got quite a bit less than other schools because we're not a full title school, you know, whereas, I won't do the comparison with Evergreen anymore because that's water to the bridge, but it is, it is what it is. So why they did it that way? Great, whatever reason. That was easy for them to do. It has really nothing to do with the pandemic, you know, whether you need the money or not. So anyhow, it's going back to the way it was before where you have to apply for free and reduced lunch and that'll start the fall, you know, with that. So that'll be back on the, on the docket through that. So it's basically an offshoot of that.
Okay, that's good. No action on that.
No action on any of these, yeah.
Yeah, the next one is the MTSA coordinator coach salary schedule adjustment.
I think Richard wants to talk about that. Is that correct?
Yep. So I wanted to highlight the specific part. I know it's not an action item, but I just wanted to kind of start getting the ball rolling and putting, you know, thoughts in, in your heads going forward about this position specifically. And then also just in broader terms, the coaching positions in general. And I believe that there should be a separate scale for them because right now they are on the teacher pay scale and the salary. So if, you know, you're lucky enough to have, you know, like Terry and Tanya, then those coaches who are on the very high end of the pay scale, that's great. But if you have somebody without as many years of experience working, then, you know, they are on the lower end of the pay scale, doing an incredibly high demanding job. It's very stressful, tons of responsibility. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a niche kind of thing that we, you know, certain amount of people can actually do. You know, like with, you know, going to schooling, you know, extra, you know, it takes a lot to do it. And even just, you know, the added responsibility of it alone. And so, I put together some ideas and some thoughts after seeing what Kalispell Public Schools did with the decision that they recently added or, or had where they, you know, did a, like a half teacher scale, half.
that they recently added or, or had where they, you know, did a comp like a half teacher scale, half administrator scale, just to kind of bump, bump up that daily rate a little bit. So, I, I do have that spreadsheet because I did put it together. But I do feel like it, it needs to be corrected, changed, not necessarily just to leave it alone. Also, speaking from some experience myself, was going into an instruct, instructional coach position, a coaching position before I got hired here. You know, and, and I know that, you know, that was five years ago, and now I don't think there maybe is one teacher in Kalispell or one instructional coaching Kalispell that's still there from when I was going to do that. Because of how demanding the job is, they go right back to the classroom after a while. The person that I was gonna take over for had the same thoughts, you know, you're doing an incredible added amount of work and you're not compensated for it anyway. So, it's a high burnout job. It's one that I think in the future, I'm thinking for years to come, we will have to consider that because, you know, people aren't gonna be around forever. And to attract good quality people to it, I think it should be on its own separate scale. And I understand that budgets are incredibly tough, but it's money well, well invested. But since I've been here, we've been through a couple corrections as well, you know, for, for myself. But I can also tell you that, you know, it's, it's something that should also be, be corrected. And as, you know, as it stands right now, the daily rate for a starting administrator here in the district is the same as the higher end teacher scale, which is still there. So, I just want us to kind of think about that going forward. But specifically, put the MTS coordinator coach, but also, you know, it should be considered, the broad spectrum, it should be considered to, to do something with that, so. Hopefully, that makes sense too about how to correct it potentially, the idea of doing a half. So, basically, you're combining two half daily rates together, and you could add days to a contract. There's lots of ways to do it. Any answer, any questions?
Are you well prepared or at least willing to, to work with Cindy throughout now until our August meeting to put something together for the polls of ours that we could put on the agenda?
Yeah.
I'd like to see this show up on the agenda, along with, I think we've brought it up multiple times, the paraprofessional schedule as well, and I think those two items are super important to, to address and make sure that we attend to those.
Yeah, I, I, I do have a spreadsheet going to that, that just lists every, you know, everything in a clear, then a formula of how you, because you would have to plug it in, you know, for each different person, but.
As we do deal with the budget and have a meeting, you know, the two can conduct tail, they're not exclusive. So, as we're discussing this and paraprofessional, whatever, it can be with the budget, in conjunction with the budget. I'm saying, do we need to have a separate budget consideration, a meeting with an agenda?
I think because of contracts, we would have to, do we have to amend the contracts though?
If you're talking about what he's talking about. Right, so, yeah.
You can put it on agenda. I think we would have to amend their contracts and then it's a separate agenda item, but we could, yeah, certainly discuss them in the budget as well. You can do it.
So, we discuss it as we do the budget, and then at a later meeting, we have to, we put those things on the agenda?
We could, if everybody's comfortable putting them on the agenda to at least. One thing to think of.
At the August meeting.
It doesn't necess, it can be a, it could still be an information item, and if you decide to do it, let's say in September, right, it can just go retroactive back to, you know, back to August or July or whenever it starts. You don't have to approve it at the August meeting necessarily. I mean, there's a lot of times where contracts are, you know, for school districts, I mean, they can go a year before they're approved, and then when they're finally approved, they just go back retroactively and then to.
So, we discussed it at the August meeting for sure.
Yeah.
Go from there.
Yeah. You'll have a real good idea of where your budget was to, you know, today.
Okay, so then will we consider those two things? Okay, thanks, Richard. Then we'll look forward to that then at August meeting. Okay, the preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I think that we have it in our computers here to the folder before the next. Of that August meeting for the budget, I think it's ready. So, we've got it, so we'll just go on that one. So, the only thing I'd say about the German is, as much as I enjoyed visiting with all of you after the meeting was adjourned last time, that is a no. Because that can, that constitutes a meeting, but it's not then. After this meeting is adjourned, if we all get together, it constitutes an unauthorized meeting, so it's a score of ourselves. I'm just, why am I saying that? So, everybody will know that I'm not trying to ignore them. Because I thought it was important that we get together. Then I said this meeting, they, this step or so, I mentioned it during, and I just go, oh, no, you can't do that. Everyone has to leave separately. Two, two of us can walk out together. More than that, it constitutes a core. Just like, you know, just like, because I don't want everybody to think that I stormy out this year.
Luckily, I don't think we've reached any issues of decision making or policymaking.
No, but it's the appearance.
It's the appearance, yes.
I guess we need a journey, don't we?
I know if this, we couldn't run back, which will.